Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Agenda for Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Only available on this Zoom cast today as it is an off-cycle meeting and anticipated to be fairly short. We will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Carl Schultz?
Here.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Sherry Corrick? You might be muted, Sherry. We didn't hear you, but I could see your lips moving. There you are. And Sam Corbett?
Here.
Okay, and Mike Baptiste is absent. I did anticipate that based on a conversation I had yesterday. Okay, preliminary business thirty-two dash twenty-one, Resi LLC. Thirty-six, forty-two, forty-eight, Robin Wood Road, map four lots A, B, and C endorsement of Mylar. I've had an opportunity myself to see the documents that we had described in the last meeting concerning the dismissal of the legal action against the town. And Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did review the original plans and the resubmitted plans, and they are, in fact, unchanged?
Yep, there were two Mylars submitted to the board recently. One of them is the exact same as the one that the board approved originally. And then the second one is more landmarks for the land court. But it was, there were no other changes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there any questions amongst the board or comments on this particular action?
Just a question. This is not a public hearing, right? It's just an administrative action?
Correct. And I don't see any hands up with concerns or questions, so I would.
There are, there is Mr. Donahue has his hand up. I don't know if we're going to take discussion or testimony.
I was gonna say that I'm not quite sure what there is to add to this where it's not a public hearing. I don't, I don't want to start an open-ended discussion about this. I mean, this, this was an administrative in an administrative discussion.
Correct. This was a, this was a formally approved subdivision plan. And all we're doing is acting on voting to sign the Mylars, right?
Voting to sign the Mylars now that the, the legal action has been resolved, correct?
I make a motion, we endorse the Mylar.
One more thing, Ken, Ken has raised his hand. I don't know if that.
I don't see his hand up.
He just disappeared, so I don't know where he went.
Ken is currently in the meeting with you guys.
Ken, you have something to contribute?
I just wanted to note that you want to file the covenant at the same time as filing the Mylar.
Okay, and that covenant's been prepared?
That covenant has been prepared, exactly. I don't know where it is now, though.
Okay, can we have it? Can we have it attached to the Mylars so that when the board comes in to sign the Mylars, we can review the covenant?
I think we were hoping that you'd be signing the Mylar there at the meeting.
How are we doing that if we're remote?
I don't know. I guess, I guess it doesn't work that way.
I don't see it happening. I mean.
So I think we need then two motions. One is to just endorse the Mylars and I'm, I don't know if, Ken, did we get a copy? Is it a sta-, it's the standard subdivision covenant?
Yeah, standard subdivision covenant. They have to complete the roads and all, all the utilities before they can get building permits.
I, I'm not, did Sonia send it to me?
I don't know.
Hang on, I'm gonna go look at my mail.
Yep, I'm gonna go look at the, at the projects. I don't have it.
I'm gonna look at what she sent to us last week.
I looked at my email as well, too. I didn't see anything in there with the covenant.
I don't see anything in the posted documents either.
I suggest you do a conditional approval then.
I, I'm not gonna vote to approve anything I haven't read.
Yep.
Wait, I've got, I'm gonna go back to the ninth here. She's got something. Nope, that's just the agenda.
Would you guys have spoke about this covenant when you originally approved the project?
I'm looking through the posted, the posted documents, looking to find it, and I don't see it.
Hang on, let's see what's there. There's Maritime Haven. After reviewing, that's from Josh. Hang on, attach, please find the necessary documentation. That's the Form C one, which I did see. That's not the covenant.
Right. You want to break this out into two? Into two parts?
What does that accomplish?
There is a pending motion. I know, Sammy, you made it.
Yeah, to approve the signing the Mylars.
Correct.
All right, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Kyle Schultz. All in favor of signing the Mylars with the understanding that we have copies of the dismissal of the legal action and confirmation through the planning office that the original plans are unchanged. All in favor? Carl?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it'd be four zero two, four zero, four zero one.
Um, why four zero one? Who abstained?
No, no, well, Mike's not here. Yeah, so four zero zero.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, discussion? Again, we, we've caused a delay for the applicant because of processing errors. What is your view on holding a planning board meeting? We can, we have time to post an agenda before town meeting next week just to vote on the covenant. We, we, we can't keep holding these applicants up because of.
No, I, I, I agree.
That's my position. That's who I'm putting it for. I'm not making a decision.
I, I agree.
I have a question. I'm looking at the last document in the file, and it includes the covenant, it includes the conditions, includes the waivers. The, the covenant is at the back, Form F, and all of those documents have been signed by all of us.
The covenant has been signed, then?
Yes, yep, on February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Oh, there it is. It's at the very bottom of that document that you started.
That's right. That's right.
Yep, February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two.
Oh, well, then we don't need to take any action. It's been signed.
Right.
Looks like it's got.
That's what I'm saying.
Your name, Mike Baptiste, me. Jane, if that's your name, boy, you need some penmanship lessons.
Let's move forward.
Okay, then there's, then.
Then there's nothing else to discuss.
Mr. Gay, it appears that the covenant's been signed. All we, all we need to do then is to go into the office and sign them.
Sign the Mylars. I can, I can stop in tomorrow for my portion.
I can as well. What? Jane, what email is that on?
It's not in an email. It's in the, the file.
Posted documents.
And it is.
Back on the website, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, it's the last thing on the list.
Great.
Okay, good. So that takes care of that.
Mr. Gay is on. He should have everything he needs then. He's got his hand raised. I don't know if we want to recognize him.
Yeah, we can, long as we don't dwell on it. Like I said, I, I need to keep this meeting short. I've got commitments tonight. But so the Mylars will get signed. Looks like most of us will be in the office tomorrow to sign them. The covenant's in place and already been signed for two years. So is there anything else that we need to address?
Good evening. Thanks for letting me jump in. I would just say, due to the appeal and the fact that those covenants were signed at the time of the original vote, it might be a good idea to have them re-executed because I could see the land court having an issue with the, the date delay. So just out of an abundance of caution, if the board would entertain a motion to re-endorse those covenants, since you're gonna be signing the Mylar, that way the dates match. Just, just purely out of an abundance of caution, as we're dealing with the land court.
So can, can, can we recreate those covenants with the exact same language with, with today's date?
Yes, we can.
And I, I would point out that on the original one, that the bottom was signed by five of us, but there's page, the the signatures page following the decisions and the conditions and the waivers was only signed by, looks like four, so I guess it was, I didn't sign it. And that was not intentional. That was an oversight. So I think that abundance of caution is probably a good idea and get us to sign both of those pages.
So I move that we recreate the covenant that was established February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, Jane? Set the date?
Uh, yes, two thousand and twenty-two, and it includes conditions and waivers and a bunch of different things in that document.
Uh, we re-endorse. That's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Carl?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we'll get into the.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
We'll get into the office and get those signed right away so you can continue on.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you. Next up, can I? I don't have a copy of the public hearing.
You want me to read it to you?
Would you? Yeah, I don't have a copy.
Town of Wareham Planning Board, fifty-four Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, oh two seven five one. Notice of public hearing with the Zoom address. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section Five of the State Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, that the Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. To discuss the following proposed amendment to the Wareham Bylaws. Article thirteen, remove limit of licensed marijuana retailers. To see if the town will vote to remove the limit of three licensed marijuana retailers in the town bylaws. Inserted by Jaco Rinta, Wareham Planning Board, Michael King Chairman, first notice, April second, two thousand and twenty-four. Second notice, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, is there somebody here to speak to this article? No one? Okay, that's not a good sign. I, I.
Wait, first, Mike, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I thought that's what we just did.
No, no, I read the hea-, hearing. Now we need to, I know that we opened the public hearing for, to discuss the marijuana. I don't.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick correction to what Carl just read, that it's oh two five seven one, not oh two seven five one?
Oh, okay, that, I'm dyslexic.
Can't trust you with anything, Carl.
I'm, I'm dyslexic, I guess.
So, okay, so I entertain a motion to open the public hearing, propose zoning article for Springtown Meeting. Vote to see if town will vote to remove the limit of three licensed marijuana retailers in the town bylaws.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You're too late, Jane. Motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Carl?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sherry?
And can I vote?
I think to open the hearing, you can.
And I can vote. I vote aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Again, I will put that out. Is there anybody here to speak to the request for the Article thirteen change? No.
It really makes me crazy.
Okay, I mean, that's the reason we're here tonight.
Exactly.
This is why we had this meeting tonight. So here's, here's my, my concern with the article. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, because you have a much better retention, memory retention than I do, but I don't believe that the article is constructed properly. It, it doesn't reference the specific zoning bylaw. It doesn't reference any specific increase number. It's a very generic. They, they're just request to increase it. Don't, to what? To four, to a hundred? I don't think, I don't think anything can. The.
It's, he's not increasing it to any number. He's removing the cap entirely. But you're right, it's, it's not properly formed. It doesn't rec, it has to.
It has to follow the format as listed in the, the town bylaws.
And there is a particular clause that the clerk, and I'm not reading it verbatim, but if you read, if you go online and says how to write a citizen by law, there's basically a clause that says, or to take any other action as the.
Relative thereto.
Relative thereto, yes.
Right.
Uh, I think that's an important clause. I, I don't remember why, but in, in the past, uh, when I've submitted bylaws that don't include that, I get reprimanded.
Well, my, my personal opinion, and, and I will put it out to the board, but my personal opinion is that we've got two, two shortcomings here. One, we don't have a properly formatted petition, and two, we don't have anybody here to speak to it. And as such, and unless there's other comment from other board members, I would entertain a motion not to approve, to, to, to support.
Mr. Chair, it's a public hearing. We need to allow the public to speak?
Hands? I don't see any hands. Is, is there someone in the public that would like to speak to this particular citizen's petition? I need a.
Miss Smith. Left of stop.
Miss Smith?
Let me ask Miss Smith to accept to be promoted to a panelist, please.
Miss Smith, can you unmute yourself?
There we go.
We're Todd and Anita Smith on your phone. So first of all, thanks for bringing this item up tonight, even though no one else seems to be here to talk about it. I'd like to say before making a comment about it, that I think at this point in our meetings for the town, we should always have town meetings in person. I think the time for Zoom during the pandemic was useful, but it doesn't give the same venue and voice for the citizens of the town in the way an in-person meeting does. I'll leave it at that. Second, I'm just curious why anyone would be interested in having more of these shops? Are, are we making the kinds of revenues that we thought we would off of the taxes for the ones that exist? My impression on that is we are not. So if we put more in, then we just have more underperforming stores, and that doesn't seem to do anyone any good. And so I, I think the previous comments about making sure this is in the right format are good, and it also be good to understand before even entertaining it at any substantive amount, that we understand what the benefit might be for the town before we just raise numbers without any kind of knowledge or background. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your input. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, I did, just to speak to the citizen. Please know that the planning board's preference were always to be a hold and in public meeting. This article was submitted at the last minute, and we only were notified of the need at the last minute. And this was our last possible opportunity to hold a public hearing and still meet the deadline. And unfortunately, today is Patriots' Day, and the town offices are closed.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I wanted to explain to you, I agree, public, in-person meeting, I support that idea. I just wanted to explain that we're trying to accommodate a last-minute submission.
This is right. This is, this is a last minute, and, and we've been having in-person meetings since the ban on face-to-face contact was lifted by the state. So trust me, I live my life on Zoom meetings, and this is the last place I want to be. I'd much rather be in a room full of.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? Any other comments from the board?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Kyle Schultz. All in favor? Carl?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And Sherry, I think you could vote on this. I'm gonna go out on a limb. Sherry?
To the extent I can vote, I vote aye.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. Five zero zero.
Five, one, two, three, oh, there's five. You're right. Okay, now we're five. Yes.
I would now entertain a motion for the planning board to recommend to not.
You can recommend for further study is the usual way to deal with this.
Why would I do that? We're, we're here to decide whether or not to recommend this, to support, to support this to town, town meeting, aren't we?
Yeah, but the usual way is to, uh, say to recommend for further study.
I, I don't, I don't support further study on the, on the idea, but you can recommend that.
I, I don't either. I, I'm gonna stick with my, my initial request, which is to entertain a motion for the planning board not to support and forward this to town meeting for consideration.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Kyle Schultz. All in favor? Carl?
For the following reasons. One, because the article is, as formatted and stated, is incomplete. Two, because the article is basically creating an unlimited or removing the, the cap. As we've been guided, there, there is a minimum requirement of three, which is based on state law, which is a function related to the number of packaged goods stores. So I think, Mr. Buckland Informer, we have thirteen packaged goods stores. Twenty percent of that would be three. So we have the minimum required by state law. We're not required to create an unlimited number of marijuana.
Licenses.
Yeah, a license, and this is not for delivery. This is for distribution, right? Or, and it's not clear entirely in his article. Three, I think, since we originally passed the the ordinances of opening the doors to marijuana establishments, Wareham benefited from first mover action, and at the time, we were if not the first, one of the first. At this point, every, every town in the area has, has facilities. So I don't see that it's going to benefit the citizens by giving them more access. There's certainly plenty of access in the area, and I don't see that it'll necessarily benefit the town by creating more revenue. So for those reasons, I vote not to recommend this to.
To town, town meeting?
Town meeting.
Jane?
I do have a quick question. If the proponent wishes to bring this back at a later date, in order to do that, they've got to substantively change this. Is that correct?
They would, they would have to reconstruct the petition and.
Which, I think, I think it needs, so I, I, I will vote aye that it should not be promoted as a good idea at the moment, the way it's written.
Sam?
Aye, for all the reasons Carl stated.
Sherry?
Aye, for all the reasons that Sam, Carl, and Jane stated. To the extent I can vote.
And, and the chair votes aye to five zero zero. Okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
There's, there's one more agenda, right?
You're right, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I, I, Sherry, I know this is super important, but I have a really limited amount of time, so to the extent that you, we can keep it brief, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I will race through this, but I did want to say a couple of things before, this may very well be my last planning board meeting. Except if I'm not elected to the select board, in which case I'll be happy to be, continue to serve, but I wanted to make a couple of observations before leaving. Oh, I am looking in my mind at some possible futures for this town and for the actions of this planning board. And I think it's really important for the planning board to ask the town what kind of town they want. Because I think the ultimate role of a planning board is to make decisions in keeping with the town's vision. And so the town sort of needs to know where it's going, and I'm gonna focus on solar development, and I'm gonna do this pretty fast. And accompanying battery storage. I think this is the future we have in front of us. The state has a goal of ten gigawatts of solar power. We all know this. Very ambitious. I'm not gonna make the argument that this is not an effective goal, because no matter what we do, air floats around, and if others aren't following suit, our reduction of carbon is not all that helpful. I'm not gonna argue that this part of the country is not favorable, favorable for solar development, although I don't think it is. I'm not gonna say that the resources that the Commonwealth is going to rely on put all together, to me, don't constitute a reliable electricity system, because they're all variable, and batteries are of short duration. And I'm not gonna say that this is gonna. And I'm not gonna say that this is gonna be really incredibly expensive, because it will be. Um, and will raise the cost of living here. I'm not gonna argue about liability associated with abandonment and decommissioning. We've all talked about this. I think all those things are true, but this, none of this has persuaded the state. That the goal that they have is uh, not the right goal. What I'd like to say very quickly is. What does the impact on Wareham and what do we need to do? Because I think uh, we've seen materials that demonstrate to us through ever sources description of the resources they they plan to interconnect. And the Department of Public Utilities, study of interconnection and all of the projects in this area. That they're looking at interconnecting either actually or potentially. If you look at that, it totals about twelve thousand megawatts. And if you allocate about five acres to each megawatt, we're looking at about. Um, you know, sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand acres of land, if it's all ground-mounted solar, devoted to solar. And to the extent this is natural land, so that's a lot of land to give up. Now. What happens is that the states need, perceive need to cite large amounts of solar. And to locate potentially large amounts in the area that the state deem suitable. Uh, really upends the efforts of local governments to control growth and planning in their communities. Uh, it's possible that the state may even more or less give up certain areas for solar development. And uh, this, in fact, may be where this, this uh, area is headed. Now, this is an area of the state that's not strong economically. It's struggled, it's had, it has a large environmental justice community. And to cite large amounts of solar, which have a industrial steel. And cents and batteries on natural lands and communities where many of the citizens are on fixed or limited incomes. Uh, gives the message that our citizens are less important, less deserving of a beautiful natural environment. Less entitled to safe drinking water and other water resources than other more prosperous communities. Now, it is fair to expect the um, Commonwealth uh, people to share in the the shared sacrifice of. Putting in solar and renewable resources, but it needs to be equally shared. And it should not all be borne by the areas of the state that are less wealthy, less well armed. Uh, less able to address uh, solar development. Uh, if there's not a sharing of burdens, then what we have is a continuation of historic inequalities. Uh, that have uh, burdened certain communities, certain areas for quite a long time here. Now, as you all may know, the additional challenges that the state. Commission on Energy and Infrastructure, citing and permitting, has just released guidelines. Uh, basically saying that they intend to assign authority over citing of solar to a state entity. As opposed to municipalities, except for those small. Uh, small solar projects will, which will remain with uh, municipal citing boards, or excuse me, municipal planning boards. But they'll be operating under very limited guidelines assigned by the state. So I think we are in the process of potentially losing jurisdiction, potentially facing. Relatively steep odds in how this town addresses its growth and development. So the question is all, that I'll leave you with is what do we do? When uh, if Wareham wants to be a town where the landscape's dominated by solar fields and battery storage. With developers more or less dictating the location, size, and other factors. Developers that actually have no connection to the town, no history. Uh, not. In all cases, a sense of responsibility. Um, we're getting there. That's, that is where we're going. Right now, the law is in favor of solar development. And developers will argue, as they have to us, that planning boards have very little, little ability to control or condition projects or to reject them. And they will push hard to locate the projects where they can. So if that's okay. Then that's, we're, we're in good shape. On the other hand, if Wareham wants more balance, more of a voice in the development of the town, here's a fact that's pretty hard. Planning board needs more resources than it has to make hard decisions on projects that, that appear not to be in the town's best interest. Because the way the law favors developers now and the state's goals, being selective about projects is not gonna be easy. The planning board will need to use whatever resources it can. Uh, not from the town's pocket, because we know it's not there, but from those who seek to build in the town. We should be looking to them. To help us to assist the uh, the issues that they're bringing to us. One potential source is fifty-three G accounts. Uh, seems to me this is what, one reason they were intended to be used. If not, where else? I would argue that there have to be additional resources, otherwise I think we're gonna be. Uh, we we may not necessarily be headed where most, most citizens would like us to go, but maybe not. I don't know for sure. Uh, and so I'll leave you with this one thought. We're facing an uphill struggle. Where is the help available? And how do we control the destiny, destiny of the town? Thank you for giving me this courtesy, and thank you for the honor of serving on this board, assuming that I'm not back after May seventh.
You will, you'll be back.
Maybe in a different capacity, but we're not letting you go that easily.
I've already fixed the vote. She's, she'll, she'll be back. Uh, thank you so much, Cherry. I I. I I can't agree with you more personally. I I think it's, you know, um, the 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 town. The town's been a target, uh, for whatever reason, um, and I don't think the citizens of the town get a fair shake with these developments. And um. It'll, it'll be an interesting, it'll be an interesting uh, future as to how this is all gonna play out for sure. And the, and the planning board does, does need all the resources it can get its hands on, because these developers, they do come in well-armed and well-funded. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh. At the, at the risk of you actually winning. Um, I I hate to say it, but um, you know, knowing you and and knowing. Um, the intelligent decisions that the town people make, I'm I'm gonna go on the assumption that you are gonna win the seat in that we will lose you. And of, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you so much for your participation and your guidance and your knowledge. Your level-headedness, it's um. It it's been a pleasure and a joy to to have you as part of the board, and we are definitely gonna miss you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I would say I'll miss you too, but I don't think that any of us are gonna have that chance.
Uh, with that said, uh, I would entertain a motion to dismiss, to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cherry Quirk, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor? Carl?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Cherry?
Aye.
And it looks like we've lost Sam somehow, um, so I'll vote aye for a four zero zero vote. Thank you all so much for. Giving up the portion of your night, and uh, we'll talk soon.
Take care.
Bye-bye.